Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, all through the week we've been drinking beer. And we'll be drinking when you get here, thinking will I ever be sober, hoping this will never be over. And I'm drinking beer and I'll be drinking when you get here. We started drinking liquor.
Well, hello everybody. Welcome to Beer and Bullshit. I'm Corey McGee. This is my guest host.
Guest host?
Guest host, Jason Blossano. He's uh, he's been on every podcast, but he's a, he's a guest host.
Yeah, okay.
I misspoke there. My co-host, Jason Blossano. And tonight we are at Compass Brewing again. We're just doing the rounds, eh, the breweries and having some fun.
Make it easy.
And we're joined by our special guest, Kristen Murray, councillor for the city of Timmins, Ward 5, recently elected.
Most votes.
That's true. We topped the vote.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, tell us, what's a bigger honor, being on city council or being on Beer and Bullshit?
Oh gosh, I have to make sure I say the right thing.
Oh, you can swear.
You can say what you want. I told you that we weren't gonna cut any of this stuff unless you like actually specifically tell us to cut right now.
Well, definitely being on council. I put a lot of work into that, so.
Okay, not a lot of work to get on Beer and Bullshit.
And we don't put a lot of work into this.
That's true. Well, we're very happy to have you here because, uh, we've been, uh, we had Michelle Bwalo on last, uh, last episode. And, uh, we're looking to speak to our new representatives from our new council that's just been recently elected. And sort of pick your brain about how things are looking for the next four years. And really what kind of got you into this whole municipal, I want to call it a municipal mess, but I want to like avoid.
Not yet. It's not a mess yet.
Yeah, well, I don't know. I don't know. Looking at how the campaign could have gone and some of the online discussion, it seems like it can be characterized as a mess. But what's, just first question, what did you, what got you into, uh, municipal politics and what made you want to run for council?
Good question. So I was involved in a lot of nonprofit work, uh, throughout my fifteen plus years working in Timmins. And I think what they're missing on councils, the representation from a certain demographic, absolutely. Well, a few demographics. But I think even as a child, just watching like question and answer period, kind of like, you know, channel seventy on cable where they have, uh, the, the stuff that no one else probably watches.
As a kid.
As a kid.
Yeah, I, I mean, I've always had an interest in politics, but I can't say I've been that interested.
I lived in Schaaflo. There was not much to do. Uh, but yeah, so I met quite a few like female politicians that really, you know, stuck out there for me. Um, I met Michael Jean, who was amazing in 2010. She came to the Friendship Center where I worked at the time and my daughter had the opportunity to present her with, um, a gift from, from our community. So it was pretty cool. I also met, um, this can be a little controversial. People are probably gonna criticize me for this, but Kathleen Nguyen. So I was.
Oh boy.
Yeah. I mean.
She was the premier.
Yeah.
What's so controversial?
At the time.
That's so controversial.
Well, I think, well, during my campaign, people had seen me, uh, post a picture of, um, our, our prime minister and they were like, just going for me.
Oh god.
So I thought that was interesting. I'm like, it's not too often you get to meet people in these positions, right?
The leader of country or province or whatever.
Exactly, exactly.
But that, I think that sort of speaks rather to the state of political discourse rather than to you as, as a person or a candidate, right?
Well, I would think so, but.
Not other people, not the people criticizing you.
Absolutely. Like luckily, you know, you have supporters and you don't have to comment back or whatnot, but I think, um, yeah, so I, I've always been interested in politics more so from the point of wanting to be on a, like a school trustee. But when this election came up, there was so much happening in Timmins and I'm like, okay, you know, I had a few people encouraging me and I thought, is it the right time? Cause you have to consider so much. You have to consider your family, your friends, your work. And I just, I went for it. So here we are.
And you made it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it definitely made a big impact in Timmins because as we said at the top, you topped the vote. And like I, for somebody who's not an incumbent, like I'm pretty sure at the last, the last election, it was, uh, Noella? Noella topped the vote?
Or, or.
She wasn't, or was it Mike Doody?
Yeah, it might have been Doody. Regardless, one of the two.
The 2014 election.
The three of the, of the four elected, the three incumbents were, uh, were the top, yeah, of Ward 5.
Sort of be a new face.
Yeah, and I was, before I knew that, uh, I needed to get a certain number of votes. So I looked at the previous election, how much votes did they need? And I thought, oh my gosh, I'm gonna need.
Someone should have done that before too.
I'm gonna need like three thousand votes at least. I said three thousand and I was talking to an office mate. And I, I thought to myself, okay, wow, I don't know if I know that many people who actually vote.
You gotta know, it's only people you know that'll vote for you. Uh, yeah, I was, Jay made a comment there and I was gonna say, how, how does it feel to have somebody sitting at the table here who has successfully run?
Two in a row now.
Jason.
That's two in a row.
He ran for council in 2014.
Yes. Failed miserably.
I don't wanna say miserably, but he did. All right. Had a good showing. No, but I, I do find it, uh, interesting that that's the approach that you took. You, you looked at it and said, so, do you mean that from like a systematic point of view? Like you just looked at it and said, okay, we need this many votes?
No strategically, because I didn't, when I go into things, it's not with the purpose of, okay, you know, it's, it's too much, I'm gonna be defeated. It was like, okay, I need to do this and what do I need to do to win and be successful? So I had to be myself, obviously, but at the same time get myself out there. So I'm sure you guys saw my face.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
So that was one of my strategies because my name doesn't mean as much to people. I'm not from Timmins and I don't have a family that's well connected. So those are two things that I knew going into it. So I had to look at some of the things that people would consider a weakness and just find a strength in that. So, you know, having my face everywhere and really being involved in the community for over fifteen years was something that benefited me very much. You know, just building those connections and relationships. Um, I never knew back then, when I was building and forming those relationships that I'd be here. So that work paid off kind of on its own.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Like that, that networking piece, right? And it's, uh, so you mentioned that you did that mostly through your work or through volunteer work or?
Through both. Uh, I sat on a lot of boards in my spare time, I guess, people call it. I don't have much of a social life in terms of, uh, going out and partying. That's not my thing. But, you know, I sat on the board of KidSport, I sat on the board of Victim Services, I volunteer as a bench staff for Ringette. So I coached my daughter's Ringette team, provincial team. So we've been doing quite well. So I do, I dabble in a lot of things, you know, I always keep busy. There's a lot to do in Timmins. I think, you know, if people really open their eyes, they'd see the potential. And that's one of the other reasons why I ran is because, you know, we have people in our community that sort of, you know, paint a bad picture of Timmins.
A little negative.
Yeah, a little negative picture of Timmins. And I came here at seventeen to go to college and I stayed. I love it here. There's so much to do. I know you're laughing. It's, but it's such a great place and I see a lot of potential and I've, I've loved living here for the past while, so.
Well, if you look at Corey and I, we both left Timmins for college, university, and we both came back. And it's, it's.
Planted roots here and everything.
Yeah. It's, uh, you know, if you, if you're willing to do something and make something out of it, it's a great place to be. But if you're gonna sit back, be a little negative, it's, it's tough.
Exactly.
But I do have a question. Uh, so like, where do you find that, uh, if, if, if there was something that you're able to notice, like your, your base like support, did you find that you found it within that network of friends or did you found like going door to door and speaking about, you know, you know, issue X or issue Y, that those, you seem to get the support from that aspect?
I found a lot of support in friends and network, like business people that I've connected with, cause I've been in the nonprofits for a long time. And I think that paid off. Um, I'm gonna tell you about one, one experience, my first experience going door to door. And it was on my street. So it was shocking.
Door to door was fun. I gotta say, that was fun. Cause you did something with it too.
I did some with Jay.
It is fun. I loved spending time with the older people, quite honestly. That was the best part of going door to door, but the first home I'll never forget. I was knocking, I'm thinking, you know, these people see me, I park not too far, I live on the street. And, uh, she slammed the door in my face.
Nice. Wow.
And then, and then a gentleman saw me. So I thought he was coming over to kind of, you know, be nice. And he's like, it's a tough one, eh? And then he sort of cut me down a little bit too. And I thought, oh wow. So, but I kept going, I kept going. And the reason behind that is because, you know, in, in life, we get lessons, right? So that was the beginning of my campaign is having a door slammed in the face and another one criticized me. But I thought, you know, I'm gonna keep going and if I can't handle that, then I'll never be able to handle office, right? So if, it just, it kind of gave me the, the opportunity to say, okay, you know what? Different tactics. So I, I let door to door knocking go, cause that was very early in the campaign. It was probably too early to be going door to door. People probably didn't know there was an election happening. So I, I gave that a little break and I just strategized in another way. So I, it was really about kind of, um, over analyzing a lot of different aspects of my campaign and yeah.
See, you mentioned that somebody, like the second person you met criticized you. And I, like, this is where I'm, when I'm talking about like the state of discourse in town, that they can take somebody who's presenting themselves, who doesn't, who didn't serve on any previous council, hasn't had any, hasn't made any of the decisions, but still feels the need to, to criticize what exactly? Like I don't necessarily understand where, you know, they, you tell them about your positions on certain, on certain issues in town and.
Yeah, it wasn't, so the gentleman on the street, we hadn't even engaged in a conversation. And mind you, I was with my daughter at the time, my oldest daughter who's twelve. So I definitely didn't want to put her in, uh, positions where she'd feel uncomfortable. But I also wanted her to teach my kids lesson through, lessons throughout the campaign that, you know, you don't, uh, you don't give up, you know, you, you keep going. So I think this, this gentleman was interesting in the fact that he had, had asked me if I'm from Timmins. And when I said no, he was like, you have no business running. So that, that took me for a surprise. And I, and that's when I explained to him, you know what? Since I've been old enough to choose a place to live, Timmins is where I came. So technically, you know, when I was of the age to choose on my own free will, this is where I came. You know, I can't control where I was born. I can't control where my parents wanted to live, uh, but this is what I chose. So it was, uh, I, I always have discussions with people regardless of what their mindset is. Sometimes the discussion's longer than.
Than you want it to be.
Exactly. But hey, you know, everyone has an opinion, so.
No, I, I find that very interesting. And, and we've had a few people on the podcast that aren't Timmins, like that have, haven't lived in Timmins their entire lives and they've chosen to move here and live here. And I always find, and I remember talking to my, my parents about this, like, these are the people that we need to hold on to as a community. Like these are, are the people that are going to be expanding the community, making it more diverse, making it more, uh, of a rich place to live. And it seems like there's a bit of a divide on that front, like kind of wanting to hold on to the old school, the old guard of Timmins and, uh, the lifestyle that comes along with that. And not really understanding that you can do that and still expand and, and have a multitude of different things, uh, available in the, in, in town. So I, I, I feel like people who, like yourself, who come to Timmins and aren't from here, and especially young professionals, not necessarily, you know, it's not to.
Graham Jenner on?
Yeah, yeah. We had Graham Jenner on, who's a lawyer in town. And I said the same thing to him. I said, these, I feel like you guys are the most important people to keep, to keep in Timmins, you know? Because it's gonna ensure that we, we diversify our, our economy. That's, that's one huge thing. Like to, to have people come here and earn enough money and don't, and can actually build a life here. And without having to necessarily rely on the resource-based, uh, economy, right? Like the, the natural resource economy. It's, uh, it's huge. It's huge for the community. So I, I'm, I mean, and the fact that you've presented yourself to run for council and won, and now represent us on council? I think it's amazing. It's just showing like how Timmins is growing.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So it kind of runs against the, I don't know.
Narrative?
Yeah, the narrative that some people would say this town is going, is going down the drain. I don't really know what they mean when they say that. When somebody tells me like, this, this town is terrible, I said, well, what city have you been living in for the past ten years? Like Jesus.
And it's like, really? You like, I don't know what argument they would have or what example they can show that makes it that much worse than it was when we were growing up. Like.
It's better.
Guess what? I got my bike stolen when I was a kid. That happens. That's just part of it. You get your bike stolen.
Is that what you're worried about?
No, but it's like, it's, like shit happens. And, and like, like we have now, you know, we have businesses coming to town. We have obviously two great breweries in town now, you know, uh, one being Compass.
Just pick which one we like, right?
I guess.
We just love them both.
No, it's every, whichever one we're at, that's one we like the most. We're not gonna drink that other swill over the other spot.
Wink, wink.
But, uh, no, it's, uh, where were they going with this? Oh no, there's new stuff.
Started talking about beer and it was like.
Oh god, more beer, yes. And we have, so, but like we have businesses coming here, people try new things, you know, you have, you know, interesting new businesses coming to town all the time. People try things. It's, there's a lot more than it was.
Oh, absolutely.
A lot more.
And so that said, we, we've talked a little bit about, you know, how things are improving and some of the issues that go along. Like what do you see are the priorities here in Timmins to, for council to be focusing on?
There are a lot of priorities. So some of them I mentioned during my campaign. Obviously homelessness is one of them by far, um, especially in the winter months. Like now you see the ambulance downtown quite often. We have a lot of people in our alleyways and it's cold out there. Like I am cold walking to my vehicle. I could not imagine living out there. So that is by far the most, um, I think, number one priority, well, in my opinion. I'd have to say our, our declining population, absolutely. Cause it, it just affects so many other areas, right? Like it, it affects our, our economic development, our growth, our, our community. And, uh, so one of the committees that I, that I chose to sit on was, um, TEDC. So I think, yeah, it's pretty important. So I kind of aligned a lot of my, my campaign with the committees that I wanted to sit on to sort of have the, my campaign sort of follow through, as opposed to just getting elected and forgetting what I was running for in the first place. So I really did align, I'm very analytical, very strategic when I do things. I think about things rather than just acting. So I think that'll really play well when, when I'm, you know, on council, so.
So you're saying that your priorities are essentially homelessness and probably like poverty type issues and also economic development because of, you know, client, uh, population? Does that fall in line with, uh, kind of like your educational background and your work experience as well? Like you're saying you did a lot of nonprofit work and where you work now perhaps? But like education wise as well? Like is that all, does it all come together?
Yeah, it all comes together. So originally I came to Timmins to continue studies in social service work. And I also, after being here, uh, one of the classmates had said to me, why don't you do a dual diploma? You only have to take a couple of extra classes. I'm like, heck yeah. Like I'm a keener, I'm gonna do this. So I took, I took drug and alcohol counseling as well. And I think, you know, I really set out to come here because my community at the time, there was a lot happening, a lot of addictions, whatnot. So, you know, I'm gonna save the world. I'm seventeen. I'm gonna save the world. Um, I didn't end up going back, but I've been saving the world over here. Uh, so I, I pursued that, graduated very young when I started in the field of child welfare. So that's kind of been my passion all along in my, in my adulthood, but I've always worked with nonprofits. And, uh, you know, had the opportunity to work up in Musunee as well and throughout Timmins at various agencies. So I started in foster care, uh, housing, um, children and youth who are placed in care and, uh, moved up to be the supervisor. Went on to be the director of programs and services at the Friendship Center. So I was really kind of expanded there. And that's when I learned that I had leadership skills. I didn't know before until, until Veronica had pointed that out, who was my boss at the time. And she's like, you know, you, you really need to, uh, to hone in on that. So she gave me that position as well as, uh, I attended university at, uh, Saint Francis Xavier in Nova Scotia. So they have a leadership institute within their, their university campus. It was just amazing, amazing, amazing program. Uh, the women in the program as well were, were great. There was twenty-five chosen across Canada. So we had to apply. There wasn't much of us, but I got in and it was just amazing. So I, I think when I, when I graduated from that program, I wasn't really putting my skills to use. I was kind of sitting on boards and committees, but not, I, I felt like there was something big coming. And not really knowing what, and just kind of continuing on and, and then, you know, boom, I'm like, okay, I have to, I have to take it a step further. Because I feel like I'm not being impactful enough. I always have to kind of be creating that, that change. And that's what they taught us in, in that, in that program.
Is to keep pushing for change, kind of that, that, uh, pressure on reform, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's, uh, that's interesting. And, and I think there's, especially now at this moment, kind of in history, if you look at, uh, you look at the media and even world politics in general, there's, there's really an emphasis on elevating women into positions of leadership and, and, uh, and I, I don't, maybe elevating is not the right word, but because it's not, it's more about promoting women wanting to, to pursue those roles of leadership. And I think it's awesome to see and it's awesome to, to kind of get a feel as to people, people's leadership styles when they get into, when they get into positions of power. So like the way you approach your campaign and the way that you're, you're saying that you're gonna approach this term. I find, I, I find that interesting that, that you're, you're mentioning, you're gonna look at this for, you're gonna look at issues from a systematic point of view and just kind of look at things strategically. And I, I really do wanna get into the weeds with you on this stuff because I, I, you know, we have talked endlessly about things like Stars and Thunder and the Aquatic Center and all of that. And I, I feel like everything just became yelling in the last term. And I don't know if you agree, like people just came to identify with their side of the debate. And they just couldn't look at the issues for what they were.
So one of my campaign goals was a balanced approach to governance. And that's definitely something that I've taken with me throughout my career is, you know, making sure that we all, we all have an argument or we all have something to say, but doing it in a way that's balanced, right? Your objective, you, there's no reason to yell. There's no reason to create any spectacles. Um, I think you can get your message across, just saying it in the right way, right? And, and as human beings, we should be able to, to do that, right? I think right now we have a council that's very diverse and we're getting along well. And there will be disagreements, rightfully so. But I think we have a different dynamic right now. You know, once we get going, I'll find, find out what that looks like, but a different dynamic that allows us to communicate effectively.
You mentioned that you, you watched a lot of politics, like question periods as a kid. Were you a fan of watching the, the city council meetings?
Should I have not admitted to the question?
No, 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 that's very okay. That's a very informative piece of information.
You're gonna file that away for later.
No, but were you a fan of watching the city council meetings? And, and was that a bit of a catalyst to you deciding to run for council on, in this election? Because I, I know I'd watch this stuff and sometimes I would, I would ask myself like, I, I feel like anybody I know could do a great, a way better job than what's going on right now. But, uh, yeah, it, it just got to be a bit of a circus, right? Noella said they had a drinking game. People had a drinking game? Not they, not council.
Oh, I'm like, woo.
That's a good, uh.
I was already told.
When was it? They were.
It's every, it's something like that. They, people.
Every time someone would say something or like.
Mike Doody would slam the table.
Or something. Yeah, there'd be a drink and she was telling us about it, yeah.
Wow.
But yeah, did you find that, that, that whole circus atmosphere that, uh, from time to time manifested itself at council? Would that be something, was that something that sort of motivated you seeing that and saying, listen, we need, I need to be involved in making this better?
Yeah, I, I think what happens is when I was reading a lot of comments and just in the city, people look to their government as an extension of themselves. And, you know, that is not a great represent, representation of, of who we are. I don't believe anyways. Uh, I believe in being able to communicate effectively. And sometimes, you know, when I picked up a newspaper or saw something on Facebook, I was a little disappointed. And, uh, you know, no disrespect to anyone on council formerly, but I think we, they definitely could have, um, just communicated, you know, just.
Oh, they were communicating. It's a different type of communication.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think there was a bit of an us versus them, kind of mentality. But, uh, I'm, I'm glad that, to see and to hear. And Michelle echoed the same sentiment last, last time we spoke, when we spoke to her, is that everybody seems to be really on the same page about like kind of having a conciliatory tone, you know, everybody's, uh, looking to work, pulling the same direction, I guess.
Yeah.
So no, that's, uh, that makes me happy to hear that.
Good.
So I have a question, uh, which I'll have a few.
Clean it up, dear lord.
Was there anything, like when you, you, you said you had some door knocking, but you just went and spoken to community and you kind of went to your connections? What was the biggest, uh, thing that you, you've got back from individuals? Like what was like their number one concern? So like, when you start speaking to them, yeah, they might have had concerns like, you know, the aquatic center and whatever, this isn't under crap. But did they also have like crappies? Cause I'm saying crap, cause I just had enough hearing about it.
We just talked about it too much.
And we talked about it too much. Uh, but you know, like were there, were they also, you know, uh, pushing about, you know, like the current homelessness problem or, or addiction issues? Or, you know, just kind of like, you know, standard, you know, uh, price, cost of living here or standard of living in the area? Like, did they talk about those things? Like what were the main, let's say, two or three points that you kept seeing routinely?
Well, I definitely know that Stars and Thunder and the Aquatic Center were the top two. It was almost to the point where I thought that people didn't want to hear other things I had to say. Like I was so willing to share my opinion and just have discussions. So, you know, that clouded a, a, a large portion of the campaign, unfortunately. But I think, you know, the debate allowed me to elaborate on the, on other issues that, that were happening within the city. Some things were definitely homelessness. I think the downtown, the, the down, Timmins downtown was another big one that people brought up. Was, yeah, not being able to have parking, wanting more shopping, uh, downtown, wanting more businesses. That was what I heard a lot of. Especially because people in Ward 5, being the area that I, that I represent, um, you know, the downtown core is, is in Ward 5.
See, I always have a hard time with the, uh, shop, more shopping downtown. I understand that's what people want. I understand what's, what needs to be done. But, you know, retail is dead. Amazon, hey, like some people pick up, yeah, pick up little, uh, you know, GoPros and stuff like that on, on Amazon. People pick up whatever, like they don't go out and buy as often, unless you're very specially shocked. But when you especially shop, cost comes with it.
Yeah.
And also, you know, because of everything, all costs of doing businesses going up, up and up, it's hard to, to, to compete. It's actually when you have a shop downtown, which you need X square footage, you need to pay. It is tough. It is difficult. So like when people want that, you know, like fix, like, well, unfortunately down, like, I would argue downtown, it's gonna be more and more of an office area.
I, I definitely would love, and this is just my own personal thing. I would love to see downtown be more, you know, eating out, kind of drinks after work, kind of vibe. But, you know, I'll, I, I can't make that happen. But it was, it's something that I would love to see because I think there is a certain age group and I think, you know, myself included, who, who'd like to have that opportunity to just unwind after work.
Happy hour. Yeah, absolutely. And that, those like, I think.
Ruin Miranda style.
Yeah, businesses like that can, can succeed downtown because they would essentially placate, not placate, but also, you know, go after the office crowd. You know, like, cause hey, you have a lot of people working at that, at the, uh, CPP, but CPP, is that what's downtown? Neil Barker?
The government?
Yeah, Service Canada. Uh, and then you have, like, you know, you have everywhere, there's a whole bunch, there's a lot of offices.
Young professionals, yeah.
So like there's all, you know, lawyers, there's doctors or whatever downtown. Like you can gear towards that. Unfortunately, people always, I think, want just, you know, retail. Unfortunately, retail is gonna be tough. And that's gonna be the issue. And that's just my advice.
No, I, I would agree with that. And I, I think that, uh, what, what you're saying, Kristen, is the, the idea of having a downtown atmosphere where people feel like it's a bit of an extension of an entertainment kind of.
Yeah, entertainment kind of district, in a sense.
Uh, I, I think that, that'd be interesting, having like patios and, and more, more people, I don't wanna say more people on the street, but more, like the urban parks are perfect. Initiative to start, to build from, right?
Absolutely.
And, and I always find the atmosphere great. You bring the kids out and it's, it's just kind of a shame that it's only at that time of day, right? Where people are working and, and, uh, so you get the people who, who work or who are off, who work in the downtown core or are, are off on that particular day that can come out and enjoy it. But then when the evening comes and, you know, there is the opportunity for, let's say, a, a bar or, um, a restaurant that's open there to have a patio and have people out having drinks after work, it, it just kind of doesn't, it, it doesn't serve that, that population, right?
After hours market.
But one of the things that I did find interesting, you, you mentioned, um, your top priority as a councillor. You feel that the priority for the city is homelessness. When, when you said that, the first thing that went off in my mind is how does that play in, in an election? Because I always feel like, you know, even myself as a homeowner and taxpayer in Timmins, I don't, like that's not an issue that's so visible to me. I understand that it exists.
But, but it encompasses so much more, right? Your crime rate and other things that are happening within our community. So, you know, it's, I didn't make it the focus of my campaign because I, I wasn't about just singling into one area. That, that just seemed foolish. It wasn't, not a good tactic.
Strategic, right?
Exactly. But I think, you know, having personal relationships with some of the people, and I mean, when I talk personal relationships, I'm talking about, you know, working at the Friendship Center and serving meals on Tuesdays and seeing these people come through the doors, right? I, I know that they're homeless, so personally impacted by their, their stories and wanting to help them out. But I think if the city came to this issue as a whole, like we have a lot of very great nonprofit resources in town. But I think what happens when you're homeless, you can't go on Facebook and log on and say, when's the next meal or, like realistically, it can't happen. And I think you have to look at it from a end user perspective of if I'm in those shoes, where am I gonna go? What am I gonna do? And I wouldn't wanna go to ten different agencies. I'm gonna wanna go to one place. And, you know, we have a lot of great people doing a lot of great things. And I think if it was more of a collaborative effort under one roof, there would be a lot done and our homeless population would be getting services in one spot. So it's sort of, you know, they're not, um, going to various people, various agencies, feeling frustrated, not knowing what to do.
And the living space seems to be a bit of a, a, a good starting point for something like that, right? Like I, I'm, and, and maybe you can elaborate a little bit on, on, I, I think Jay, you might know a little bit more about this than I, than I.
Than you, yes.
Yes.
Most definitely than I do.
Most people do. But, uh, see subtle jabs like this are, are very. But eh, see subtle jabs like this are, are very normal. Likes to tell me how dumb I am. That's all right. Uh, but no, living space seems to be a good, a good initiative to start. Kickstart more initiatives, right? And having something that's, like you say, everything under one roof where, and you mentioned this from an end user perspective where you see how this impacts the person or how the person's gonna access those specific services all at once.
Yeah.
Right? And, and that, that's, that's a good way of looking at it. I don't know from the way I see it, but, but you're saying that right now, all the services are kind of scattered around?
I think some of them are working together. That's not any criticism at all. I'm just, I would just see uh, an opportunity to work really well together. Like my daughter, right now in her class, they're doing a pop-up kitchen and uh, she said, hey mom, you gotta be there, you're in count, you know, like invitations everywhere now.
Local celebrity after this podcast.
Uh, so they're doing a really neat initiative. I, you know, I commend them for doing that, but uh, I think, you know, as she's going through, my daughter's picking up on things because she's heard me talk about things. And she's asking the teacher, well, like how are we gonna advertise? And the teacher says, well, on Facebook. And she's like, well, these are people who don't have Facebook. And he's like, well, they're gonna find out, they're gonna listen to the radio. Well, if they're homeless, they're not gonna have a radio. So she's really like, you know, she's making me proud, I must say.
No, that's, that's awesome to, to think of it that way because it's true, right? For the average person in, in Timmins, eh, and this is why I found it interesting that this, this, you could actually connect the dots for somebody who, Joe Blow, you're going to their door, knocking on their door and, and saying, alright, you know, one of my priorities is homelessness. Eh, how do you get that kind of vote for you? Because like to that person, it's very likely that homelessness is completely invisible to them.
Yeah, so when I did a lot of door knocking conversations, it wasn't about me. It was really about the people I was speaking with. I never made it about, this is what I'm gonna do. It was more like, this is who I am.
What are your priorities?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Because I mean, uh, no one wants to vote someone in who's basically self-centered.
Yeah, you're right. Are we uh? Yeah, sure. I'll take another one, please. Yeah, two. I think, this stuff is just too delicious.
How do you like it actually?
It's good. It's really good.
Yeah, maybe this is a good segue for uh, Jason to tell us what we're drinking here tonight.
I can't remember what type it is. I know it's, it's the hibiscus.
It's the hipster.
The hipster, there you go. It's, it's a hibiscus beer. Uh, well, I can't remember what that means, uh, but it's, it's fruity and super tasty.
Some sweet notes in there.
Yeah. It's solid. I've actually, it's, it's becoming, I think, my favorite one here right now.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty delicious. It's, it's kind of a specialty thing that you just wanna drink at uh, specific times, I think. Uh, yeah, they, they got some good offerings here at Compass Brewing.
So I can only drink this when I come back for another interview or is that what you're saying?
You can only drink this?
You said only.
Whatever you want.
You, you can drink whatever you'd like. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna bring you back for an interview in like six months when uh, city of Timmins has just, you know, worn you down.
No.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm admiring your optimism. No, you know what? I, I, I think it's great. Um, and, and like I said, it's a, it's a welcome change and kind of a breath of fresh air to see somebody who's uh, positive about our city. Cause uh, sometimes it, it can get to be a little discouraging.
Yeah.
But yeah.
I uh, so you, homelessness is your, your focus as we spoke many times?
Not my only focus.
No, your, your primary or your, or your.
What you feel this city of Timmins needs, needs to work on?
Uh, maybe, I won't say priority, but yeah, we, we know where we're talking. Sorry.
I should have brought my whole list of priorities.
You should have.
It's been a longer than an hour and a half.
Homelessness.
But uh, are you, are you, have you just considered or looked at what ways now that you're gonna be in a position of, you know, government position of, of power, uh, where you can be able to maybe try and uh, be able to uh, lobby senior levels of government? Have, have you looked at what those opportunities might be or, or what uh, what routes you're gonna try to take?
I think, so we have to kind of keep in mind too, that we have committees set up that we're gonna be sitting on. Um, and I know George Peery, our mayor, uh, has referred to having a task force developed as well. So I definitely want to stay true to some of the committees that I'm sitting on, but at the same time, I can, through my job, as, as a health promoter in the community, do that work. So, you know, the work that I'm doing on council will kind of be separate in a sense of what I'm doing through, through my job. Um, so we, we do support living space through Missaway Community Health Center and uh, we're looking at providing, kind of programming at their site. So, you know, I, I have a lot of um, plans. We're planning with our traditional healer as well as our diabetes care staff in going in and just kind of assisting some of the homeless population that way. And really getting a sense of what their needs are. So I think it's really important because what happens with communities, sometimes we forget to involve and engage people in what, in what they need, right? We're always just telling, oh, you need this, you need this. And I, and that was one of the biggest um, parts of my campaign was the social, social and community engagement. So it's really important and I, I definitely want people to feel like they're involved in, in the entire process, right? Because I'm representing such a huge population of the city. And uh, you know, I, they, I don't want them to feel like, hey, I just, we're just making decisions on our own and not involving and not engaging. So I think um, very long answer to your question.
No, 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 that's.
But it's not really a, a yes or no. So, uh, you know, I, I, I wanna say that I'll be, you know, lobbying and rallying the, the government in terms of um, you know, focusing on, on homelessness, but I know I'll be doing that through work for sure. So it, it'll be in one way or another.
Yeah, cause I just see it like, a lot of people think it's like, it's a Timmins specific problem, but like, the reason why Timmins might have an influx or a larger portion of homelessness, one could argue is because we are the, you know, the, the hub, we're, we're, we're the, the local area, like the largest uh, area, uh, municipality in the area. So we get, we get people from the coastal, you know, communities. We get, you know, Mattise, Cochrane, Cap, all these, all these places. Uh, you know, like if, if you're homeless or near homelessness, there, you're gonna like, you know what? I'm going to Timmins, gonna be more opportunities, but then once you get here, unfortunately, that's not the case.
Yes.
And well, um, you know, for whatever reasons. And like, so like, I, I, my, my argument or argument or thought would be, you know, like, this is something that's not only Timmins has to, you know, go after, maybe, maybe, you know, spearheading it, but it has to be something that you have to be able to bring in some senior level of government and to say, you know what? This is not just our problem. We're, we're, we're not, we're taking the load and taking the, you know, the, it's the, the problems being burdened on us. But there has to be outside help as well coming in.
Absolutely.
Because it's not just, you know, this, we're, we're taking the problems that, oh, I'm saying problems and I don't mean that prejudatively, I don't mean that, you know, looking down, but you know, this issue is now being essentially focused here now because.
Now that, that said, and, and having to be involved with uh, senior levels, levels of government, you, you kind of hinted to this earlier, talking about uh, uh, having met Kathleen Wynn and having uh, was it taking a picture with Trudeau?
Yeah, yeah. My daughter was very excited to meet him. I, I was very surprised.
I was gonna ask you about your politics, like your personal politics. How, how do you come at politics? And from what side of the political spectrum would you, at what, at what place in the?
Don't say what party. Maybe just, you know, lean one way or more.
Yeah, exactly. It doesn't have to be a party, really. I, I feel like party politics is too divisive.
I think, just to answer the question, people were very surprised that I ran in this election because they were like, wow, she's, she's never mentioned politics or whatnot. Like I'm very much from a family who doesn't talk about politics and religion. So it was, that was very interesting. Very interesting um, for me to, to go quite a few, like when I told my aunt I was running, she thought I was joking and I was like, no, I'm serious. And then she saw the promo stuff and she's like, oh, I get it now.
You are serious, yeah.
Yeah, so um, I don't really like to talk about my own opinion of, of politics. I, I definitely have, I'm very opinionated. I think what, what happens sometimes is I put my opinion out there when it's needed, not always just kind of throwing it around. And uh, yeah, so.
Well, I think you can argue you'd be, like, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but you, you know, socially liberal, lowercase, lowercase liberal, lowercase L, no, obviously. Socially liberal and.
As I'm waving a red flag around.
You seem progressive, like, you know, we, we don't know, fiscally, would you be, you know, considered more conservative side? Like, e- even then, like, you know, you could be a, you could be a fiscal conservative, social uh, progressive with the NDP party. Like, you, you could be any of that stuff or even the other way, like compared to someone in a, a right wing party. You can be, you know, socially, uh, you know, uh, liberal and progressive, eh, but be on a conservative side. Like, it's, it's the thing, it doesn't, I, I don't think you, like, if you're afraid to put yourself out for whatever reason, I don't think that's.
It's not really afraid to put it, I think it's more about, my decisions are based on situations and not necessarily just, okay, this is who I am. It's kind of like taking a, a real good look at, okay, what is this situation and, and making my, my actions or judgments or whatnot based on that. So I, I, I don't know how to.
Pragmatist.
Situation will be, so your decision will be, will be based on what's.
My mind's always going, so you know, it's, it's uh, never at rest.
No, i- i- it's interesting because eh, you know, one, one of the things that I found that motivated the people uh, voting in this election was ver- well, at least the online discussion tended, tended to reflect this, is that the, there was a hunger for fiscal responsibility, right? This idea of transparency in government and, you know, making, making sure that the tax burden was kept manageable for the community. And that there was, the city wasn't getting involved in things it shouldn't be getting involved. Spending money it didn't have on things it didn't need. So, and, and again, that, those are all subjective statements, right? What you need, that, that all can be uh, can be debated. But what I found was interesting is that it appeared that we elected some very progressive counselors. Counselors that were willing to not necessarily just batten down the hatches and say, we need to do everything we can to keep the tax burden as low as possible. But we, well, y- you know what? I, I don't wanna put words in George Peery's mouth either, to say that we elected a mayor who's extremely conservative because I didn't find he was that kind of candidate, but the extremely conservative people in town voted for George Peery, for sure. So I, that, that's where I'm finding that there's a bit of a disconnect with, with, like, I, I'm finding, I, I'm having a hard time seeing how we're gonna proceed with, with all these initiatives or exploring all sorts of initiatives for expanding the community. But at the same time, we need to keep taxes as absolutely low as, as they can be, right? So I know that's a complex thing to navigate and, and it's fair enough to say that, you know, you'd look at every situation on its own. But is there um, kind of a central mode of thinking that kind of animates this for you? Like, do you feel like you look at this and say, alright, above all, we need to make sure that the tax burden is manageable on people? Or we say, you know what? People are gonna have to pay a little bit more in order to maintain service levels in the community, right?
That's a really hard one because I think y- you can sort of, it has its ebbs and flows, like where can you cut back in certain areas to sort of make up in another? Um, you know, I, I never touched the fiscally responsible thing during my campaign because it's not a promise that I can make at all, especially on my own. You're, you're dealing with a whole council of people. So regardless of if I think I can make that happen, there's other people who might be, you know, voting another way. So I, I like to be honest in my approach and that's why I never kind of said, okay, I'm gonna, you know, change the way our taxes are. I definitely wanna push for, for ways that our taxes can obviously stabilize or decrease, but I can't make that promise. So that's kind of where I stood throughout the campaign with that.
Yeah, and that, that, that's fair enough. And, and I guess even looking at every specific issue and just saying, on their own merits, is this good for the community? Or is this not good for the community? Now, whether it costs, wha- you know, what it costs or what it doesn't cost, has to factor into that equation because ultimately it will, you know, having something we can't afford is not good for the community.
And everything's gonna have a cost, right? If, if we don't buy something that, you know, people think we should have, the cost would be, okay, we don't have that social economic growth in our community. So eh, there's always gonna be both sides of it.
Not all costs are financial.
Yeah, exactly.
Or even some of the social costs might end up being a financial long run. Which means, you know, it's not, you can't attract the, the, the young professionals. You can't attract the families, you can't attract, or you, or they leave because that's not gonna be here. So, you know, there, even social issues can have significant financial repercussions in the long run.
Oh, a hundred percent. Yeah. I, I agree with you, Jason.
They're getting along.
One of the few times on this podcast, not, we, we don't argue as much as we thought we were gonna argue. When we first started this thing, like, we, we thought we were just gonna have screaming matches between each other and we would do it in my basement and maybe like.
Cause we usually did.
Cause yeah, before we started the podcast, we didn't get, this podcast has made us insanely good friends.
Oh, okay.
I would have said insanely good.
There's a disagreement happening.
Faking it.
Also wanna say friends.
I should have sat in the middle, maybe less tension.
I think so. Uh, no, no, I, I, I find um, doing this podcast and having our conversation. One thing that's been awesome about doing this has been meeting people like yourself and just being able to, to have those conversations with people in the community. And honestly, we thought we would have nobody watching this except our parents. And it, it's been actually pretty overwhelming. Like people, people watch the show and.
Oh boy, I should sit up straight and know.
No, no, no. Most of the people who watch the show, they watch it for the informality. Because it's, that, that's kind of the, the nice thing about the format, right? Is it's just you get to talk to somebody for a long while.
It's not staged or rehearsed, yeah.
Exactly. And there's not like, okay, we have 15 minutes with you, so we're gonna sit here with like pre, pre-planned questions.
That are sent beforehand and I'm just.
Yeah, and you're just.
We do send you the location beforehand, little, little questions.
Oops.
I thought I was getting punked, by the way.
That was a little weird. We'll, we'll do better at organizing for any future guests, so uh, no, but uh, how, how's been your experience with media, with local media?
Uh, it's been good. It's definitely been good. I, I think I didn't expect it to be so frequent. So that, that was something I found a little shocking, like, you know, I'm not one to be like, hey, I, you know, I gotta be in the spotlight. Um, so they show up quite often, but, and it's fine, you know, they're, they're great. You know, Lynn and um, Lydia are usually very friendly. And if, if you ask them to edit something out, if you kind of fumbled up your words, they're, they're good about that. So, uh, yeah, they're, they're always there.
Nice.
Maya Hogg, it's usually there as well, so.
Yeah, and, and I find that uh, they've, there's been a lot of focus on the fact that we have the most uh, women on council that we've ever had. I think I, I may.
At one time, at one time, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So I think there's been a lot of like media focus on that, on seeing, and, and I, I read one article and I think it was a Timmins Today article that where uh, the question was asked, like, do women govern differently? Like, what's the, uh, what's the different style? Uh, Jay, Jay's going like, in my house, yes, but.
They only govern anything.
No, but uh, but she made a good point, eh, or she made, um, Noella made a, a comment saying that she, she felt that women looked at the big picture more than um, specific issues. And I found that interesting. I found that uh, not derogatory, but as a man, I found, I found it to be uh, an interesting, interesting way of looking at things because I, I did feel that when we met with Noella on the podcast, that she seemed to have more of this kind of exasperated feeling of, I'm just like, I'm sick and tired of arguing about little things and we can't debate big things, you know? So I found it interesting that you made that comment in the media. So I, I don't know, like what are your views on, on how, I guess, women would govern differently than men around the table?
So I have kind of like an indigenous worldview in terms of um, men and women, right? Because you have to have that balance. You have to have that, you know, the men and the women. Um, and I think even further than that, we're probably gonna see a lot of our um, LGBTQ people in the future looking to run for government, which is great. So I don't, you know, when I, when I was running my campaign and I'm gonna go off track for a sec, I never focused on the fact that I'm female, that I'm black, that I'm indigenous. Those were not things I brought up because I ran on, on things that I, that I have, my skills, abilities and whatnot. So it's kind of strange for me now to be focusing, like we just had a women in politics session recently. And of course, you know, took the opportunity to be there, but I, it, it's, not that it's uncomfortable for me, but I just, I have a different worldview in terms of men and women. And, and there's no disrespect there. It's just, we, we need each other, right? So I, I don't see it weird that women are in politics and, you know, it'd be nice if there was an equal amount, but at the same time, it, we're, the people who need to get the job done are there.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I appreciate that because I think traditionally, definitely there has been um, ma- maybe an exclusion of a cer- uh, of a certain demographic. And you mentioned that at, at the very beginning, that you felt like council was lacking a voice from different demographics. And I, I feel like that has consistently gotten better over time and we're going in the right direction. I think some people might say we haven't made enough progress and that's, that's perfectly fine, but you know, the march of history just kind of, you know, history marches on, right?
Yeah.
Um, so I, I do think we're going in the right direction, but I, I can appreciate somebody who can look at this and say, alright, now, you know, the, this moment in time is a, is sort of allowing me to be in this, in this position. And I'm not necessarily going to use it to, to focus on myself and what's, and what my identity brings to this table. Although not ignoring it, not ignoring the fact that this is, this is something to highlight, the progress is something to highlight so that we can continue.
Yeah.
But still bringing it back to the fact that now I'm here to help govern.
Yeah, yeah. Cause I definitely think that this means so much for a lot of people, right? For the black community, for any minority in, in, within our community, as well as women, indigenous people. And eh, very proud of who I am and where I've come from and my heritage, both sides. And I think that, you know, it, it isn't, it isn't everything for, for me. Um, really about using things that I've learned along the way, my leadership skills to, to further. And I'll definitely never forget who I am and where I came from, but um, you know, it's, it's not the focus. You know, I, I won't be pounding my fist, saying, you know, this is, this is, you know, indigenous rights or black rights or whatnot. But where I need to speak for community, I definitely will.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, and I, I, I don't know, I like, I, I find it, 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 it's awesome to, to know that this is where we're at, right? And it's, I, and I guess maybe anybody who's kind of seen any kind of progress at any time, eh, at any time in history, probably has that same kind of feeling. So that's why it's hard to, to sit here and objectively say like, yeah, I feel so special to live in the time that I'm living, although I still feel it, you know, as. Although I still feel it, you know, as lucky as I do.
I think it's interesting because I ran on being male and white and it brought a very different group out. They were proud, but it was a.
They, they really want to rally. It was a joke. Anybody who's listening to the audio of this is not looking at Jason's face.
Oh, boy.
That was solid, that was a solid joke.
That's funny, that is a solid joke.
I can appreciate a joke.
That's why I lost.
Okay, now, you kind of threw me off with your funniness, Jason.
I do it once in a while, not many, not very often. You had a train of thought there, keep going.
Did I have a train of thought? I don't know.
It's gone now.
Yeah, it's gone now. But no, you mentioned that you, you felt that there were certain demographics that were underrepresented, uh, underrepresented at council. And I, I wanted you to speak a little bit more to that because I do think it's important that we do have an understanding that some communities or, or some populations in Timmins aren't necessarily as visible or on the political stage or in general, intend to kind of fly under the radar or fall through the cracks, probably a better expression. So I, if you can speak or elaborate a little bit more on that, I'd find that interesting.
Yeah, so I think when I talk about demographics, I talk about a lot of different people who are not represented, right? So it could be culturally, could be more, more importantly, socioeconomically, right? Because I think when we're, when decisions are being made and, and people are impacted, but the people it impacts are not at the table, then that's really hurtful. So I think that was sort of my, my decision to, to run was, you know, are there people who I worked with, you know, in the nonprofit sector who are impacted by a lot of decisions, taxes? Like, there's, the list goes on. And, you know, they're not being represented and visibly not seeing anyone of color ever at the table. A lot of, there's been a lot of work towards indigenous reconciliation by far, but no, no seat at the table. And that's no, that's no fault of, of Timmins or, or, you know, current people on council. It's, it's having the people like myself to actually run and feel empowered to be able to run in an election. You know, and, and young voices and people who work, right? People who have kids, they're not there. So, you know, during my campaign, it was like, you know, you have kids, you're going to be too busy. And then people were just, it was, it was interesting, people's thoughts on a lot of.
But that's, that's interesting. And you know what? I, I was talking to my wife about that we were going to have this interview tonight and she actually asked me to ask this specific question. Like, if you found that it was going, or if you anticipated it was going to be challenging to do something like this and have children at home, and I, I'm not sure, you mentioned that your oldest is 12 years old.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure if you have younger children as well.
Twelve and seven.
I guess you do, but.
Yeah, she brings up, oh, my eldest is 12, the youngest is also 12, too.
One has to be.
It's just one child. My oldest is 12 and the youngest is 12.
Twins.
But yes, so do you find that the time commitments of, of, or do you anticipate that the time commitments are going to be difficult to manage?
I don't think it's going to be difficult. So I've always held positions that kept me busy, right? So it's just about managing my time, knowing that I have supports in place. Before even running, I had to reach out to people and, and ask them, you know, if, if I'm successful, will you be able to assist me? Because it's not something you can just do on your own without the, the help of others. And definitely speaking to my kids about, you know, I'm probably going to be doing less of this and, you know, because I do coach my daughters' ring and I still continue to do that. And it's, it's just finding time for things that you need to. And when, and when I choose, when I chose my committees, I looked at when was the time? When, when, how often were we meeting? How long are the meetings? Things like that. So really, like I said, very analytical. I don't just sort of throw my, throw my name in there and say, oh, shoot, you know, I don't want to have enough time now. Sorry, kids. But no, I, I think it's important to have those discussions with your support and your family. So, yeah, I have, I have two girls, 12 and seven, and, you know, they, they were lugged around through the campaign. They'd cheer me on, got sick of seeing my face after a while, literally told me that.
On signs everywhere? Well, that's good, though, if they were seeing the signs everywhere. I mean, obviously, in the results, so.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, I've had positions where I was in a senior management, management position at a children's aid society. So I had two phones, I was on call, I had to find beds for kids all the time. So if a child was apprehended in the middle of the night, I had to make it work, like, I was always on it. And that, to me, was more of a job where it required me to be fully, like, right there. I had to be on all the time. You know, council's the same way. However, I think some of the decisions are not necessarily in the moment, life and death at that time. So I hate to kind of use that comparison, but, you know, I definitely will be making time. And people have already reached out, you know, it's kind of neat to be there to, to have people contact you and ask you, okay, you know, this is the situation I'm having, an email and, you know, you follow up and it's, it's pretty cool.
One of the things that Michelle said when she came on is she said, right, already it started the engagement with the department heads? How's that been going? How's that been, how's your experience been with?
Really good, yeah. So we have, like, residents who will email or call at any time. So I'll just follow up to try to get some background information, you know? And I don't know the full situation of, at all times. So you email them and they're, they're very prompt. So I was, I appreciate that because then I'm not waiting and then the residents are like, well, you never got back to me. So it's a very quick turnaround. Yeah, I really, really appreciate that. You know, and there's a chain of command, right? You know, you have your C O and then your department head. So we always have to make sure we're following the right processes and not just, you know, going right to staff. But, yeah, it's a really good system in place.
Yeah, because the only employee of council is the C O. So everything has to go through, every request or, or question or anything has to be filtered through the C O?
Well, respectfully, it should be because, you know, we can't necess, like, we're not the boss to department heads, right? I just, it's, it's a respect thing, too. That's the process.
But is that, is that the outline process, too? Like, are you recommended to go through them every time?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I.
Not every time, I think. So just for an example, it's like one situation I'm working with, I contacted Dave and Dave said, okay, you know, this is the person you contact and then we can sort of engage that way rather than including Dave and everything from then on out. So it really, it really depends on how he tells you to proceed with the situation, the severity of it, you know? Very situational, like I said, right? It's different.
Yeah, yeah. If it's something, like, somebody didn't get their garbage picked up, it can probably just be directed directly to that, to, to the person who's responsible and can action it as quickly as possible, right? Rather than having to go through three different layers of.
And that'd be a lot of emails, a lot of emails.
Yeah, yeah, I can imagine. No, I'm, I'm sure there's a lot of work involved and I, I think it's, it's great that you volunteered your, well, I don't want to say completely volunteered, but so volunteered your, I guess, your efforts towards representing our city for the next, next four years. So as far as that goes, we are rounding the hour mark right now. So just, I, I always try to give a little, a little checkpoint here because we, we've tended to get into conversations. Yeah, no, it's crazy, it's crazy. And we, we, we told some people that we were going to start shorten, shortening these things up to like under, I guess, three hours. And, yeah, it, it, it worked out for maybe one of the past three episodes, so I don't know.
Well, they've been decent. Like, we had the, we attempted to do the election night one, that went a little over two, I believe.
The election night?
Yeah, but unfortunately, we had some tech, we had some technical difficulties with YouTube Live and also the recording. So that just got scrapped. But that actually, that was a good one, that was fun.
Yeah, we, we had a good time on that election night. We were watching all the results come in, but it was.
That was painstaking.
Well, you know what?
It's our delay.
Yeah, that's true. There, there, it was a bit, it was a bit painstaking, but in comparison, we had done one during the US presidential election. And that one there was probably four and a half hours long. And we sat there with our friend John and progressively just got, just got drunker and drunker. Because it was the kind of, it, it was the election where they just wouldn't call it. No, none of the places would call, would call it for Trump. So we were sitting there like, alright, when, when are they going to call this? And by the end, I think it was like something like two in the morning, when, when we decided to just say, that's it, we're, we're done.
But we were like, we were, we were pretty upset because it looked like it, or like, it looks like Trump might win. And we're like, oh, and like, we had nothing to say, we're all like, are you kidding me? So it actually got like somber and sad by the end, too. We're like, well, let's have another drink. Yeah, that was a rough one.
Yeah, and, and we were chatting with, with people online. Again, the engagement we get from our audience and they would, they were sending us kind of taunting messages to stay on. No, 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 yeah, gotta stay, stay awake, we're having a party here, let's go. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and election night was very interesting, though, I must say. Like, I did not want to be around too many people because I thought, you know, I, I had anticipated that I would be between fifth and eighth. And that was my, 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 I guess, assumption, that, that's where I would.
Your analysis.
Yeah. That, that's where I would end up. And so at home, we, we each had a piece of paper and we, you know, who's going to be the mayor and who's going to be Ward Five? And it was fun, but, yeah, I, I saw the numbers coming through and I'm like, what? People are like calling me because the polls are dropping, right? But not all of them had dropped. And my mom's like, she busts in the house and she's like, you won? I'm like, no, I didn't. They're not all dropping yet.
And you like won one, like.
And I was still in shock days later, I, because I, I was just blown away. Like, I didn't expect people to be paying attention, I didn't expect that much support. Like, it was, it was insane, you know?
Well, if there was an election to, to run in, it was this one because people were definitely paying attention. Like, am I, and again, Jay, you're going to be my facts guy on this one.
I don't know.
Was turnout high in this election? It was, eh?
It was higher.
It was higher than normally. Because we, we've had some, like, bad turnout, in, bad turnout in the past. But I think, again, the social media just kind of.
Oh, yeah.
Made, made things.
It absolutely did. I had to be on all the time, which was uncomfortable for me, sort of like a private person, not necessarily always on social media. Like, I have my Facebook page and I'm, I had to learn a lot of things, how to operate a website, my Facebook page, Instagram, really had to figure all that out.
Yeah, okay.
So it was, it was good. I mean, I didn't engage in anything that didn't need engaging in, but at the same time, people, you know, they, they had comments, but not necessarily anything that was, no.
There wasn't anything overly negative?
No, I was expecting the worst. I always prepare for the absolute worst because you never know, right? Being someone who's a minority, that's, people always attack the first thing they see. So I, I was very grateful that people kept it classy with a lot of things, you know? I really appreciated that, so.
That's, that's good. And, and I really, because I know that over the past term, we've had, as, as a community, we've had some uncomfortable moments when it comes to things like race relations and that. Like, we had the, from the Ontario Human Rights Commission, what was her name? It came to town and said there was a systematic racism.
There was, I can't remember the name.
People lost their minds online, like, you felt like, people really felt like they were being attacked. And I don't know, I feel like that term's become so, like, so toxic, but it, it is indicative. And, and I think if people really reflect, like, people who've lived here for a long time, really reflect, they can identify clear situations where they're probably not dealing with somebody who's committed to racism, but subtle instances of racism are just very frequent. It's not, and you don't have to look far and it's not something that, you know, people necessarily need to feel shame about, it's more recognizing and correcting, right? Or, or at the very least, recognizing and not repeating.
Yeah, and I think when it doesn't happen to you, you don't see it, right? So I think that, that was probably one of the things that was brought out. But, you know, we're, we're definitely making a lot of progress, in my opinion, from, from where I see things, so it can only get better.
Yeah, well, that's good to hear because I, I, I think there's also the other side of the coin where it seems like some people feel like we've made no progress at all and that, I don't know.
Or some people think we're making too much progress that is backing them up or some.
Well, and that's just it, we talked about that during one of the city council, I guess, not really in a meeting, it was just a discussion about, you know, are we going to engage in smudging and those types of things, which we do in my workplace and it's, it's well accepted. But you have to factor in a lot of things and I, I participate in smudging and I definitely believe in it. But health and safety is, is kind of like number one right now, right? So how do we, how do we work in a way that we're respecting people's health and safety as well as respecting people's religious and, and cultural practices? So it's really.
Maybe I'm not familiar enough with smudging.
Oh.
Know what smudging is? No, you've never been part of it? I've actually, it's very, very, I just like, I've, I've been part of just a couple and being someone who's not, I don't believe from any indigenous, indigenous background, I know of, I'm sure there's some. Been, we've been here since 1650s, I'm assuming, or some, something, but.
I feel like I'm going to have to come back and do a whole indigenous session with you.
No, no, that would be great, that would be an awesome podcast.
I gotta say, I, when I, the, the two or three smudging ceremonies I've been in, I've actually really enjoyed it. It's very, I don't know, it's, it's almost moving.
But now I'm wondering about the health and safety impacts.
So smudging, you're, you're burning sage, right? So you're burning sage. So some people have sensitivities to the smoke, to the medicine, yeah. So that's, that's definitely something you have to kind of keep in mind.
Okay, yeah, so I guess like the whole idea of scent-free workplaces and that.
Exactly, yeah, smoke-free, right?
Yes, well, yeah, definitely, yeah.
Yeah, so, and, and within the indigenous community, we find ways to work around that sometimes, too, or, or have systems in place that support it, but not necessarily put people in jeopardy.
No, okay.
There's always, there's always, yeah.
I'm surprised you've never been to one.
No, no, I'm, I'm French and Irish, Jay. It's, definitely.
I want to make fun of it somehow, but I got nothing right now.
We were talking about racism and he's, he's going to call me some, some kind of Irish slur, so no, it's fine. No, I, I, I do find it great that, that we, we've made this progress and we're sort of working towards rectifying some of these, these systematic issues, I guess. But it's, even that word systematic kind of bothers me because it implies that, like, the, the government itself is sort of set up to make people fail, right? Or, or to, to make people disadvantaged.
And I think that's why a lot of indigenous people don't necessarily participate in, in, in politics and voting and elections. And I heard that through some people during my campaign because I definitely wanted to have my fellow people, you know, supporting me. And, you know, I come from a demographic who women couldn't vote, black people couldn't vote, and indigenous people couldn't vote, you know, up until a certain point in time. So I think it's important now to be in this position where a lot of people felt they couldn't be involved in politics. But now, you know, I feel like we're kind of slowly making those steps, you know?
And it's hard for people to realize, like, the impacts of that when it's never really impacted anybody in your background. Like, I find this idea of, and we've talked about this on the podcast before, like, intergenerational trauma. Like, the, the idea that, yeah, some people will just look at it and say, look at maybe somebody who's from a disadvantaged group and say, well, why can't, like, why can't people just get their act together? Why can't, you know, they just make those decisions? And it's like, you don't, you're not acknowledging everything that has made you the person you are today, right? You know, if you, if you didn't have the parents you had, if you don't, if, if your parents didn't have the parents they had, you know? And those parents didn't have the experiences that they had, you wouldn't be necessarily the person you are today. Everybody likes to think of themselves as a self-made person and doesn't necessarily want to acknowledge. And I think, however clumsily, that's what we're, what people are trying to refer to when they talk about privilege and is, is just like, what has made, led to who you are today?
Yeah.
And it's, it's, it's difficult for people to swallow that because everybody likes to think that they're, they made themselves and there's nothing else that's influenced and, and really, like, we, we have to kind of give our head a shake and, and realize just how much, how little control we've had over where we are today, so.
Absolutely. And I think even just being able to run in politics, there's been a lot of people who influenced my life for me to be here. It wasn't something I was just like, yeah, you know, I'm, I'm good enough and I did this on my own and I'm going for it. You know, there's little things that happen, situations I've been in, conversations I've had that sort of led up to this certain point.
Yeah, no, that's, it, it, it's awesome to kind of see that, that acknowledgement and people starting to think, but obviously still a long ways to go.
So Corey was talking a bit about, you know, generational type of like, or, you know, intergenerational abuses or trauma. So I was going to write down just in case Corey's going to keep talking, I'm like, okay, well, I'll at least ask this, but he gave me a time to say something. He's been talking a lot this podcast.
What does that say over there? Let me talk?
It's like, shut up.
So, so there was something, it just, it was recently in the news and I'm sure you, you saw it or you maybe looked or you maybe seen it in passing. You might not have a, a specific opinion on it, but I'm not sure if you heard about the councillor in Thunder Bay who won the election, is of indigenous descent. Was it hers? I thought it was Thunder Bay. It might have been hers, you might be right.
Just how up on the news I am, I've been trying to spend less time on social media.[1725.04]
So, yeah, who did not take, would not take the oath talks because it was sworn allegiance to the Queen. Being someone who's from Indigenous background, you know, obviously, I guess you did, you did take the oath. I'm not asking you to justify why or not. But do, do you see that being a, a, not just a valid issue, but something that's gonna have to be addressed in the future?
Absolutely, so that was definitely.
I want to debate this afterwards.
Yeah, it was something, it was something that I thought about because, you know, I do a lot of Indigenous teachings and I know that I've heard stories from people who've attended residential school and I've heard stories about the Queen and I've, I've heard a lot of stories. And I think I had to sort of sit with myself and say, am I, am I gonna now continue and, and, and take that oath? And then have what I've worked towards sort of being, being kind of jeopardized? And for lack of a better word? Or, or am I not gonna take the oath and just hope that everything sort of works out? And then I'm that angry person who never got in? And, and those are my words completely. And I think, you know, I apologize if I offend anyone, but that, that's, that's definitely where I, I had to come from. Because, you know, I'm, I'm more than Indigenous, right? So I, you know, my father's Jamaican and I really thought, this is my moment and I'm not willing to give it up. You know, so there's, there's things that you, you have to sacrifice in life. It doesn't mean that I completely and wholeheartedly agree with it. But at the same time, I took that oath and I know that I will have the ability to follow that, that through.
So I hundred percent agree with everything you said. I find the difficulties though is that, you know, being now a quote-unquote member of, of government, or you are government, the government in this country is the crown. Such as, but, so my argument would just be, I don't think we really need the crown, period. So why, right, why not eliminate it? But it's how do you, you know, how do you justify, like, for that individual, he does, he wants to be part of the crown, doesn't want to swear allegiance to the crown, which is kind of like, you know, kind of tough. I understand there are laws for people who, who go and work for Crown corporations or the public sector, who can take, swear allegiance to the people or to the province or to the country, but not to the Crown because of these historical problems. But unfortunately, when you are the Crown, how do you?
How do you?
How, how do you, how do you, like, separate yourself? And I find that's just a difficult, difficult thing to.
The unfortunate thing too is, it wasn't considered prior to, you know, like, you're, you're already elected and it's like, oh, shoot, now I have to make this decision, right? So it was not even something that, that I had considered beforehand. So even when it came up, I was like, okay, I really need to, to think this through. And I know that, you know, not everyone's gonna agree with my decision, but at the same time, in the next four years, not everyone's gonna agree with decisions that I make. But I have to be confident that I've thought it through and that it's the right thing, thing for me and, and for the residents of Timmins.
Yeah, and, and I think the, the way that you described that initially, I, I thought was really good. Because like, like you say, it's, you have to make a decision right then and there, right? Are you going to do this and still, and allow yourself to be in a position? Like you say, this is my time, this is my moment? That you can be in a position where you can affect real change for real people? Or are you gonna engage in the symbolic gesture of not doing this? And hoping it works out or?
Yeah.
Taking the possibility that it might not work out? And you may, you may find yourself just being that person who did a symbolic gesture, right? Both of which have, have their merits, right? Like, it's, symbolic gestures are huge, right? They have the potential to be huge. But there's also probably so many that just kind of come and go. And then people pay attention to them, especially today, you know, with our social media brains, that we pay attention to them for a week and then the new, the new cycle.
Absolutely.
Rotates something else into our minds and.
It would be forgotten, so the impact wouldn't be there. And I was looking more at being impactful. And I'm not saying that he's not gonna be impactful at all, but I just think for me, that's the choice that I made.
Oh, I like the answer. Don't worry. I'm not gonna fight you on that, that's for sure.
I hope you wouldn't play the guest. Yeah, I, I mean, we could, we could probably arrange a podcast like that.
An actual boxing match?
An actual boxing match.
I'd probably lose.
We watched the McGregor and Mayweather fight. And that was a live podcast, that was fun. Our podcast used to be a lot less.
You guys should have a live audience, I think this would be like.
But the people who show up would not help. They would not help, the people we know.
Exactly, the people would show up and all they would try to do is distract us. The, I think it was the third podcast that we had, we were in, in my basement and my parents came down and decided to just come around and say, my mom just came, came around, my dad grabbed the mic and said, what's going on here?
Did they know you were taping?
Yeah, oh, yeah, and we left it in too. So I said, yeah, dad, you've been on the Beer and Bullshit Podcast.
No, we would have guys like, you know, Daly and stuff who would, who would sidetrack.
Oh, they'd come out, they'd heckle us from the crowd. Try to distract us from our serious line of questioning. Very important that we get to the serious matters at hand. Well, my friends, I don't know how you feel about how we're doing for, for time here, Jason.
It's up to you.
But, I don't know, how are you feeling? Do you, would you like to continue chit-chatting with us or?
I like to chit-chat, so.
Yeah, yeah, well, what, what else do, do you feel is important for us to talk about here? Because ultimately, you know, this is your platform, right? We, we have, well, I mean, I guess it's our channel, our YouTube channel.
I just take over.
This is your plan, this is your takeover for tonight. So, so tell, talk to us a little bit more about what you hope to accomplish in the next four years with the City of Timmins. Huge question.
Yeah, huge question for sure. I got asked this last week too at the, at the Women in Politics.
My real journalists? But like, technically, aren't you not in politics yet? You're like, only in politics once you start in your first council, no?
Tomorrow.
We had our first council meeting when we got sworn in.
Yeah, I guess.
Come on now, you can discount that. That was like the most important one.
You're right, you're right.
She's downplaying this already.
So, yeah, sorry, I cut you off, I apologize. That's 10, I teach you what I do, I just cut people off and say whatever I want to say.
Before you go and say that, huh? No, what do you think is gonna, is gonna be important? And what do you hope to accomplish?
What I hope to accomplish is really having people engaged in community. And I said that all along and it, it's really more about people feeling that city council's not just doing their own thing behind closed doors, right? And decisions are not being made on our own. Really knowing what's happening in the community, being involved. That's, that's, and I, it might sound pie in the sky to people, but I really believe that's where we need to head. Because if, if people in the community are feeling happy, healthy, involved, then they'll really strive to want to do more. You know, it, it increases their self-esteem and their self-worth and they're wanting to contribute to the community. Just, it, it impacts so much. I definitely think that economic development is, is something that I'm sort of, you know, thinking about as I sit on this, this committee in the upcoming, I guess, weeks or months. Yeah, I think there, there's a lot that needs to be accomplished, but really honing in on, you know, where, where I need to find myself in everything. Because I was telling our mayor, our mayor, that initially I had like eight committees I wanted to sit on and I thought, ooh, I wanna do it all, I wanna save the world.
It is going back to the time commitment section.
Ambitious, yeah. So after I looking at the schedule and figure out when the meetings are happening and whatnot, I had to look at, you know, do I want to be impactful? Or do I want to just kind of spread myself too thin? So really knowing that, because I work in the healthcare field, you know, Porcupine Health Unit is definitely a fit. I'm already sort of dabbling in that already. Violence against women, I'm already in that sector. I already sat on that committee prior to this, this, you know, journey as, as a councillor. Indigenous Advisory Council, just, it's a, it's a fit. You know, Audit Committee was something that I had not considered, but George said, you know, it's, it's great to build up your skillset. So I thought that was good that he picked up on, you know, where he saw us fitting in and not necessarily like, I want to do this, this and this. You know, he, he was, he respected our opinions, but also kind of gave insight into where he, he sort of saw us fitting in. Very, very smart man, yeah.
Yeah, we hope to have him on the podcast at some point, but I don't know, we had his, whatever, who, Steve that was running against him on the.
Yeah, before the election, oh, much, long before the election.
So I don't know if he views us, I think we gave him a fair shake throughout the campaign. I think we were.
Hey, I'll take anyone on, on the show. If we didn't give him a fair shake.
Yeah, even the people we didn't.
There's, there's a lot of listening that needs to be done. There's a lot of engagement and involvement and just really looking at things. You know, what are our finances look like, really? And, you know, where do we see ourselves? What are our goals and what does the community want? Because there is a whole, not a whole new council, but a lot of us are newly elected, right? So I think taking time to really consider those things and what, where is each committee right now? You know, DSAB, where, which is another committee that I'll be sitting on? You know, where, where are they? And, and how can we contribute? And, you know, the connecting link is another big one. We definitely need to kind of rally the government. You know, that was just downloaded to us, a huge portion of it. So what does that look like? And, you know, George and I sat together and looked at the costs for the next, like, quite a few years. And I was shocked. So really opened my eyes to a lot of things.
You don't realize just how much money you're dealing with, right? And, and I think that was one of the, the comments that we've had on the podcast before, is that it's easy for people to kind of look at amounts. And like, when amounts come to, to council for approval, right? Like sixty million dollars or whatever amount needs to be to build an aquatic center or whatever, right? And to look at that and say, that's an absolute fortune, that's insane. I, like, people can't fathom that as part of their kitchen table discussions about how to balance the family budget. But realizing just how large of an operation the City of Timmins actually is and understanding what the totality of that budget is. So that kind of ties back into your first point where you mentioned, um, community engagement, right? And having people under, people engage in the conversation. And I think up to this point, we, we have had people engage. I just don't necessarily know that it's been a constructive engagement.
That's a good point.
I think that i- if something came out of the next four years personally, I, I feel like I would, it would be great to see at the next election, just, I won't say more constructive discussion, less destructive construction would be, would be great.
Discussion.
Did I say destructive construction?
You're really prepping for the next four years, are you?
No, 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 I am, I am. Because some, destruction, construction, con, destruction, discussion. Anyways, so what I mean by that is that it's four years from now. How do you measure the success of something like, um, community engagement? Or the, the idea of transparency with the community and, and, and knowing that you've got a community that is behind you? Because I think that's the ever kind of elusive problem of any politics. Is what, how do you measure the success of that? Do you look, do you look at Facebook, Facebook discussion? And do you say, all right, now it's a little less poisonous than it was four years ago, so we've made an improvement? Do you look at it in economic terms? In, in the sense that like, all right, we've been a successful council, we've been able to, to lobby, um, upper levels of government and had all this initiative move forward, this initiative, this initiative? Which I think traditionally is the way that, that councils have been evaluated on their merit? Or do you look at it in some other way now?
I definitely think that you can't really measure it based on the social media kind of joke that you'd made. We'll just have a poll running for the next four years.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be, what was it? Norm Edwards there on Timmins, Timmins Ontario page is gonna put another poll or another campfire poll there. We, we get to decide, is Timmins doing good? Yes or no?
But I, I really think that, you know, our, it really stems from our website, the City of Timmins website. Because if you're going on there and you're looking for things that are happening in community or, or, you know, things that are just, uh, new businesses that are coming to town, you can't really find them there, it's very disconnected. So you're feeling like, you know, where do I find this bylaw? Where do I find this? And what's going on in the city? And you're just, there's, there's nothing. So as I, I ran, I kind of thought, okay, if, if I was moving to Timmins, what would this look like? You know, and, and picked apart the website, which I definitely have a lot of constructive criticism about. But I also looked at some of the incumbents and, and what have they done? What are, what are their positions right now in order for them to get back in? Um, just kind of that thoughts out with me. Because, you know, if I decide to run again in four years, if I'm successful, you know, it's gonna look like a very different campaign because I'm a newbie now. So people are gonna want to know, what did you do for those four years while you were on council? And I don't want them to sit back and question it. I want it to be an ongoing sort of, okay, this is what happened in our community, this is what's been moving forward. So I don't think there's any sort of pencil checkmark that you can say, okay, this is, this is how we can evaluate whether there's been social community engagement, more or less having people really involved. And, and I guess there's no answer for me because we have to really go through that process to find out.
It's more of a feeling.
Yeah.
Is there a way to keep people kind of updated on things that are happening? Because like, you know, if, you know, we could argue and like, you're, you're gonna be on the TDC board and, you know, we have friends who've, who've worked there and, you know, from there and, you know, and, it's easy to say, well, you know, the TDC brought this many jobs to Timmins this year. It's like, or this many businesses came to Timmins to this year, you know, so we did well. It's like, well, would that company have come to Timmins regardless of the TDC? Regardless of the efforts of council, regardless of, because of just the natural area it is? You know, like, because we have the ore in the ground or whatever else? Or because we're just the hub between all these other smaller communities? So like, how do you separate that aspect? But also, how do you keep people updated on, you know, actual initiatives done that were like, the only reason why people or businesses or people came to Timmins or, or this, this project got done were because of these steps taken by council and whatever committees offer from that?
That's a really good point. And I noticed that when I went on the website the first time and I tried to see what committees actually existed and I didn't see them attached to councillors' names. So I thought, what are these councillors doing? Like, that was my thought and it's no disrespect, but I was like, what, like, what, what impact are they making, right? You don't even know what committees exist. So I think we're moving in a direction where that's gonna now be changed. So slow, like, little changes like that are gonna come. But I definitely think it's really important to engage people like yourselves when you're saying, okay, you know, Timmins, did that business come here because it was Timmins? Or were they planning on just going anywhere? And they just, you know, this was the first spot.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's important to share and engage with people like yourself who are kind of questioning, okay, so what about this? And, and getting those questions answered.
Yeah, because I think you're, especially again, today with the social media engagement, it's, it's just, you're getting people's voices and questions that you wouldn't have previously got before this, this kind of, um, service was available where people could just instantly communicate, right? And, and there's obviously some pros and cons to that. But I, I think, you know, I, I appreciated our past mayor's willingness to engage on social media with, with residents. But I, we had him on the podcast and we told him, you need to stop like getting in fights with people. And he said it, he said it on the podcast, like, you know what? You guys are right, we're gonna, like, I'm gonna stop doing that. And then a few weeks later, he just couldn't help it sometimes. But, but it's hard though, you know, it's hard on, like, on a human level, it's hard to, to avoid getting into those holes because, and especially as a politician, right? Us, if somebody writes a nasty comment about us on, on Facebook, we can just ignore it. We're not, we don't feel as though we're accountable to people online. But there's gotta be that sense that should, even if somebody writes something that you know is just completely irrational and, and wrong and you know it's gonna be just a black hole of ridiculousness, right? Like, what, you, you've got to still feel that need to engage with that person because they're a citizen.
But there's a difference from a feeling and an act, right?